Good evening and welcome to the March 9th Board of Education meeting. We would like to entertain motions at this time to move into executive session in accordance with the open meetings law to discuss collective bargaining negotiations, litigation, personnel, and security.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Test, test.
Good evening, everyone. Everyone, and welcome to the March 9th, 2022 Board of Education meeting. Please welcome our superintendent Cheryl Pettisich, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, 3. 3A, 3 changes in the meeting agenda. A, approval to accept the stipulation of settlement regarding employee named in confidential Schedule A.
Hold on. Oh, that was the only change? And are we adding?
Right, that's next.
Okay.
Yeah, well, let's vote on 3A. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Motion passes. So the addition of 3B has been added. And that is contract Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services, 7622 to 63023. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Do you want to announce what it is?
Yes.
Go ahead, Gary.
Yes, ma'am. So this is to announce the replacement for Kevin Scanlon when he becomes superintendent on July 6th. Dr. Brian Biscari will be taking his place as the Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services. So, Brian, congratulations.
We are so excited and very happy, and congratulations from everyone. You're welcome. Number 4, students and staff recognition. Cheryl?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As I've always said, this is our favorite part of the evening, and it is my great pleasure to introduce Satacet's principal, Ms. Karen Mizell.
Good evening. Good evening to our Board of Education, Mrs. Germano, Ms. Meckley, Ms. Pettisich, Mr. Scanlon, Dr. Dubrasky, and Mr. Carlson. It is with great honor to share with you our newest New York State Master Teacher, Lisa Wall. Yes. Ms. Wall teaches Math AIS at Satacet School. Education is her second career, and we are all very thankful that she made that decision. Ms. Wall earned her Bachelor of Science degree in Business Management from SUNY Stony Brook, and she began her first career as a restaurant manager for the Marriott Hotels and as a representative for the Robert Mondavi Winery. Later, she chose to follow her true passion, went to Dowling College where she became a certified educator. Lisa has taught at Satacet School since 2000. She doesn't look it at all. She's taught 4th and 6th grade as well. As a Math AIS teacher, her goal is to provide small group instruction and support for students in kindergarten through 6th grade. Lisa and her team focus on students' skill gaps and use hands-on learning for mathematics. In addition to the classroom, Ms. Wall is also the Three Village Teachers Association representative for Satacet School and sponsors many, many of our clubs. Her clubs are very popular. I'm sure you can understand why we are celebrating this latest accolade, Lisa becoming a New York State Master Teacher. The New York State Master Teacher Program establishes an expert community dedicated to developing expertise in the areas of content, pedagogy, and school communities. This is an award given to New York State's best and brightest to build a community of learning and collaborating with other passionate educators in New York, many of whom are also from our district. Lisa, we are so proud of you. Congratulations on becoming New York State's Master Teacher. Thank you. Please come up.
While you're walking, Deanna, I'll just ask you if you can...
I'm gonna say it.
Thank you.
Which is great. Okay, number 5, reports. So we have, we are going to add a 5C, which is going to be the BAC report, which will be given tonight by Sue Wallert. But we're gonna start at letter A, and that's going to be our student representative report. Riley?
Good evening, everyone. I'll start my report by talking about sports. The winter season has finished up, and next week officially begins spring sports tryouts. Some noteworthy accomplishments: The boys' winter track team competed in states this weekend for the 400 relay. Not only did they break the school record, but they placed 3rd in New York State and qualified for Nationals. The girls' varsity cheer team finished off their season by becoming semifinalists at the Nationals competition in Disney, while also placing 3rd in Suffolk County. This upcoming weekend, girls' winter track has qualified to send not one, but two relay teams to Nationals. I know they will represent Ward Melville well, and we wish them the best of luck. Some club updates: In light of recent events, student government and Unishef clubs have teamed up to organize a Ukraine donation drive. So many other clubs have agreed to donate all sorts of items to the people in Ukraine who are in need. Everyone in the school has come together to help with this effort, and a lot of the donation boxes are overflowing with medical and hygiene supplies. Tomorrow is the last day to donate, but financial donations will be accepted throughout the week. The school bookstore alone has donated over $1,000 to help Ukraine. The Ward Melville yearbook has been putting in countless hours and late nights to submit the yearbook by its deadline at the end of the month. The class of 2022 cannot wait to see all the memories captured and documented. On March 22nd and the 29th, Honor Society will be tutoring 4th through 6th grade students in the Ward Melville cafeteria. This is a great way for stellar high school students to share the love of learning with younger kids. This Saturday, many juniors will be attending the junior banquet dance. This event was not able to happen last year, so the class of 23 has big shoes to fill to bring this fun tradition back. The Model UN Club is really looking forward to their international conference held in New York City later this month. To prepare for this event, they have been debating various issues and events for the past weeks. Lastly, I can speak on behalf of the students when I say we are so happy to not have masks anymore. Last Wednesday, when masks became optional, it was honestly such a joyous day at Ward Melville. Everyone was smiling at each other in the hallway, something that wasn't able to happen for the last 2 years. Looking around at my peers, I noticed students were not on their phones in the hallway. Everyone was just staring at one another, happy to see each other's faces again. Also, on a positive note, half the high school cafeteria now has tables again, and quite honestly, many high schoolers forgot the cafeteria normally has tables. This has made socializing at lunch easier, and after-school club meetings have become more unified as everyone can sit together. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Riley. Excellent. It's really great to hear everything you have to report, honestly. Very good. Okay, we're gonna do 5A now, the preliminary budget report, which is Jeff Carlson.
Thank you. I just have a few comments, and then I would just like some direction from the board tonight as we plan our budget for next year. The tax cap, as I've been saying every year, is, it's known as the 2% tax cap, but it's not always 2%. It varies year to year and district to district. However, for this year, for us, it happens to come out to right at 2%. So, of course, we would not be recommending that we increase, put forth a budget that exceeds a cap, of course, that went so well last year. But last year, there was reason for it with COVID and all of that. But we don't have that now, so there would not be any need for that anyway. Our state aid picture, we have the governor's budget proposal. Of course, now with the new governor, we don't know exactly how it's going to work. In the past, the governor's proposal was always, okay, we knew we would get at least that much, and then by the time the State Assembly and State Senate were done with it, it would go up from there. We don't know if that's going to be the case again this year. Of course, we hope so. And the governor's budget proposal or increase would be a little bit under 1.6 million, or increase would be a little bit under $1.6 million. So that's, you know, not as much as some districts are getting, of course. You know, if you read the papers and you see some districts are getting enormous increases, and that's good for them. But most of the state aid increase for next year is in the category of what's called foundation aid, and that's geared more towards the lower-wealth school district. That's why some districts are getting so much more than us. But anything we get, of course, we appreciate, and if it goes up from there, that's even better. One thing we do have to keep in mind for next year is we do have to start paying back our reserves for the amount that we borrowed from our reserves for COVID last year. While we used about $5 million from reserves for COVID, we spent over $7 million on COVID itself. We took about $5 million of that from reserves, but the way we did it, we technically only have to repay $2 million. Of course, the other $3 million, we would like to replenish over time, so it's there should we need it again. But we, based on the special legislation last year that allowed us to take from reserves for COVID, we have to pay back $2 million of that, and the way we have to pay it back is at no more than 5 years and at least 20% of it per year. So we have to work into our budget a minimum of $400,000 this coming-up year to repay our reserves. So we'll have that in our proposed budget that when we meet next time and we go over. Of course, we hope there is no resurgence of COVID next year. We would like to be as prepared as possible for that, should it happen. Of course, we hope not. We have our Budget Committee, Budget Advisory Committee, who is going to make a report tonight. Been working a tremendous amount of work that they've been doing. It's unbelievable. So we're hoping that this works well as a nice partnership between the citizens representing the community, the board who represents the community, and us to put together a budget that works for everybody. That's, of course, our goal. Our staffing meetings are being conducted at this time, and when we have that all in place, that's the final piece to put the draft of the budget together that we'll send to the board, and once we bring that to the board at the next, part of the next meeting, and then, of course, the Budget Committee will get that as well. We have a meeting tomorrow night with the Budget Committee. That'll be our 4th meeting that we've had with them. We have another meeting scheduled in 2 weeks, and then another one in April with the Budget Committee. That's what we have scheduled. Just to remind everybody, the board will be adopting the budget on April 13th, and the budget vote itself will be on Tuesday, May 17th, and we're going to do the voting, as we did last year, all at Ward Melville High School. It worked well. From a security standpoint, it's much easier just to section off that part of the building and the gymnasium. It's less confusion. There was a lot of, every year, when we had it at various buildings, there were some people who didn't know where to vote, and then they would call, they would go to the wrong building, they would go somewhere else, they'd go to another wrong building. So this way, it's all at the high school. It seems to work very well, so we'll keep it there. And it's a lot easier now to do absentee ballots than ever before, too. So that's really all I had. I just wanted to go over, if there's anything that the board would like to make sure we work into the budget, you know, of course, you know, as I said, the tax cap is 2%. Our recommendation would be to go right around that. That sets us up in the best place from a long-term standpoint. We will be able to reduce some positions, not so much on cutting them for budgetary reasons, but based on consolidating some electives, some enrollment changes, course requests, that kind of thing.
So I have a question. On the budget vote, will that be a savings, consolidating it at the high school this year as well?
Sure, that saves some money, yeah. Yeah, less machines we have to rent, right? Less election workers?
Less election workers. We have to hire less election workers, less machines. It's actually, we could still get the same numbers reporting-wise, it's just centralized. And we actually, for this budget vote, we actually had, are arranging for all the parking and all the activities to be on the south side, so that it's more accessible for handicapped and people with special needs. And the way that we have it broken out also in the books, it's all by letters, and it's a very small amount per person, that it's easier to get in, vote, and get out. It's more accessible. So I think it's just gonna be easier.
Deanna? Fantastic. Yes?
I'd like to have a board opinion. I'd like that number to be 1.95%, not 2% for the tax cap where we are. I'd like to know if the board is in favor of that, or to give Jeff some direction.
Yeah, we are requesting Jeff to be less than 2%.
Yes.
Understood.
Yeah, I don't necessarily know what the specific number is, but certainly I think that we're looking for something that starts with a 1.
Oh, one thing I didn't mention also, and just, I just don't want to forget. Of course, by the time the board adopts the budget on April 13th, hopefully, the state budget is in place and our state aid number is clear. There's nothing to do with what you just said, I just wanted to mention that.
That impacts the lead. So, within the context of what you were talking about before about the Budget Advisory Committee, you know, maybe we weren't clear in the beginning because we haven't had a Budget Advisory Committee in some time, and we didn't really give them a formal charge, and maybe going forward, we can plan for that kind of thing better. But I'd like to start getting into the advisory part of the Budget Advisory Committee now that, so what you've just heard is all that we know. We haven't received any paperwork yet. We don't know anything more about the budget than what you've just heard. So, once we get it, what we'd like to do is pass that on to you immediately, let you guys start to take a look at it, and we're looking forward to hearing your thoughts on it, because you're doing an analysis on a deeper level than we've done yet on it. So I'm really looking forward to that, and, you know, whatever information you need, if you're not getting it, please let us know.
So I have a question. The staffing meetings that you have to have before you are finalized, when are those happening?
They've been ongoing.
So I'm trying to get an idea of when this budget will be in our hands.
Oh, you'll have it next week, sometime early next week.
Okay, that would be definitely appreciated. And, yeah, we talked, the board has also agreed, you know, to what you've already mentioned as far as reducing, where the reduction of administration positions or whatever positions will not affect the students or their opportunities or anything else. I think we don't even, you know, that's always our goal. It's an unspoken goal that we've always put first before anything else, but we need to, you know, we'd like to see some additions of whatever you can, to give to us. And then, of course, we don't have anything from the BAC yet, which we're going to in just a moment. Does anybody have any other questions? Sharie?
Yes, so we see the meeting minutes from the BAC is very nice, a lot of information. So if the board has any question regarding the meeting minutes or any question regarding what you have done, what's the best way to approach it? Or should we just ask in this board meeting?
I think that we'll go through our statement, and then at the end, we can address that.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Probably for Jeff, because he's interacting with us on a great basis.
Okay, good to know.
Anybody else? I guess good. Okay, so now, we are going to go to 5C, which is the BAC, and Sue Wallert is the representative for the BAC. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to recognize Riley over there, who always impresses me with her attention to detail and really makes us proud of you guys, because you're what it's all about. Yeah, my name is Sue Wallert, and I am resident here, obviously. The statement I'm about to read has been unanimously approved by all members of the Budget Advisory Committee. Good evening, Mrs. Pettisich, the board, and community members who are listening in and who are present. Thank you for coming. The Budget Advisory Committee have completed 3 meetings with Mrs. Pettisich, Mr. Carlson, and other invited administrators beginning in early January. This committee was formed to increase transparency and communication with the district residents regarding the district's budget and finances. During this time, the Budget Advisory Committee, hereforth known as BAC, has spent, with no exaggeration, every day, including weekends, soccer fields, plays, all those things, examining and analyzing the Three Village Central School District budget framework and allocations of this year and years past. A list of recommendations has been developed, and it will be shared with Mrs. Pettisich and Mr. Carlson shortly. Alas, we continue to wait for a few more data points regarding staffing from the administration. However, it must be noted that our inquiries for data sharing have been met with no argument from the administration. In this case, we await information on staffing and hope to receive it sooner than later to complete our suggestions. It is important to note, aside from this missing data, our analysis has led us to develop recommendations for potential savings without impact to class sizes, electives, or activities. These recommendations also respect and preserve all current contracts with teachers, administrators, and other school staff. The committee was disappointed to hear that the district is publishing a preliminary budget for the 2022-23 school year without presenting any information to the Budget Advisory Committee, although I was just happy to hear that the board is interested in looking at our suggestions, so I'm hoping that will be a mutual benefit for both of us. It is the BAC's hope the Three Village Board of Education and administration will utilize results of our work and in-depth analysis. If our analysis and suggestions are not taken into consideration for this year's budget, it will be difficult to support a budget which could potentially need fiscal alterations. We look forward to viewing the administration's proposed budget and are prepared to provide our findings shortly after a thorough review of your proposed budget. We are asking that the Board of Education review and consider our recommendations before the final budget is approved. We ask that the Board of Education review and consider our recommendations before the final budget is presented. As we look to the future, when both you and the community understand what our work shows, it is our suggestion that the Budget Advisory Committee will, for many years, continue to be an uninterrupted and utilized part of the Three Village Central School District budgeting process. If anyone would like to contact the BAC, you can find us on Facebook, and I'm not saying that's where you need to go, at 3VCSD, Budget Advisory Committee, dash, public page. Thank you. Yeah, or that, because he is our tech guy and our master analyst, so that's Michael. So with that note, we're obviously not handing over any recommendations this evening, and once we receive that information, we'll be ready to go. And I just want to thank you and Mr. Carlson and Mrs. Pettisich, thank you for your time, and we'll see you again tomorrow night, and we look forward to seeing your proposed budget, okay? And as far as getting in touch with us, we can chat after the meeting and give you an email address, and certainly, of course, you can talk to Jeff, too, as well, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. So the next board meeting, you will also be on the agenda, and somebody from the committee will give me a name and it'll appear, okay? So we will be looking forward to hearing you speak, whomever, at the next board meeting. Does the board have any questions?
I have a, maybe it's more of a comment than a question, just, I think I take issue with one thing that you said about, when you said that the reason that the BAC was formed, how did you phrase that?
Right here, the reason it was formed was, it was formed to increase transparency and communication with the district residents regarding the district's budget and finances. So it was a conduit for us to be able to communicate with the community and begin to...
Wanted to know if the board is in favor of that, or to sort of give Jeff some direction.
Yeah, we are requesting Jeff to be less than 2%.
Yes.
Understood.
Yeah, I don't necessarily know what the specific number is, but certainly I think that we're looking for something that starts with a 1.
Oh, one thing I didn't mention also, and just I just don't want to forget, of course, by the time the board adopts the budget on April 13th, hopefully, the state budget is in place and our state aid number is clearer. There's nothing to do with you just said, I just wanted to mention that.
That impacts the lead. So, within the context of what you were talking about before about the Budget Advisory Committee, maybe we weren't clear in the beginning because we haven't had a Budget Advisory Committee in some time, and we didn't really give them a formal charge, and maybe going forward, we can plan for that kind of thing better. But I'd like to start getting into the advisory part of the Budget Advisory Committee now that... So, what you've just heard is all that we know. We haven't received any paperwork yet. We don't know anything more about the budget than what you've just heard. So, once we get it, what we'd like to do is pass that on to you immediately, let you guys start to take a look at it, and we're looking forward to hearing your thoughts on it because you're doing an analysis on a deeper level than we've done yet on it. So, I'm really looking forward to that, and, you know, whatever information you need, if you're not getting it, please let us know.
So, I have a question. The staffing meetings that you have to have before you are finalized, when is... when are those happening?
They've been ongoing.
So, I'm trying to get an idea of when this budget will be in our hands.
Oh, you'll have it next week, sometime early next week.
Okay, that would be definitely appreciated. And, yeah, we talked, the board has also agreed, you know, to what you've already mentioned as far as reducing where the reduction of administration positions, or whatever positions will not affect the students, or their opportunities, or anything else. I think we don't even, you know, that's always our goal. It's an unspoken goal that we've always put first before anything else. But we need to, you know, we'd like to see some additions of whatever you can to give to us. And then, of course, we don't have anything from the BAC yet, which we're going to in just a moment. Does anybody have any other questions? Sharie?
Yes, so we see the meeting minutes from the BAC is very nice, a lot of information. So, if the board has any question regarding the meeting minutes, or any question regarding what you have done, what's the best way to pro-trio? Or should we just ask in this board meeting?
I think that we'll go through our statement, and then at the end, we can address that.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. Okay, good to know.
Anybody else? I guess good. Okay, so now, we are going to go to 5C, which is the BAC. And Sue Wallert is the representative for the BAC. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to recognize Riley over there, who always impresses me with her attention to detail and really makes us proud of you guys, because you're what it's all about. Yeah, my name is Sue Wallert, and I am resident here, obviously. The statement I'm about to read has been unanimously approved by all members of the Budget Advisory Committee. Good evening, Mrs. Pettisich, the board, and community members who are listening in and who are present. Thank you for coming. The Budget Advisory Committee have completed three meetings with Mrs. Pettisich, Mr. Carlson, and other invited administrators beginning in early January. This committee was formed to increase transparency and communication with the district residents regarding the district's budget and finances. During this time, the Budget Advisory Committee, hereforth known as BAC, has spent, with no exaggeration, every day, including weekends, soccer fields, plays, all those things, examining and analyzing the Three Village Central School District budget framework and allocations of this year and years past. A list of recommendations has been developed, and it will be shared with Mrs. Pettisich and Mr. Carlson shortly. Alas, we continue to wait for a few more data points regarding staffing from the administration. However, it must be noted that our inquiries for data sharing have been met with no argument from the administration. In this case, we await information on staffing and hope to receive it sooner than later to complete our suggestions. It is important to note, aside from this missing data, our analysis has led us to develop recommendations for potential savings without impact to class sizes, electives, or activities. These recommendations also respect and preserve all current contracts with teachers, administrators, and other school staff. The committee was disappointed to hear that the district is publishing a preliminary budget for the 2022-23 school year without presenting any information to the Budget Advisory Committee, although I was just happy to hear that the board is interested in looking at our suggestions. So, I'm hoping that will be a mutual benefit for both of us. It is the BAC's hope the Three Village Board of Education and Administration will utilize results of our work and in-depth analysis. If our analysis and suggestions are not taken into consideration for this year's budget, it will be difficult to support a budget which could potentially need fiscal alterations. We look forward to viewing the Administration's proposed budget and are prepared to provide our findings shortly after a thorough review of your proposed budget. We are asking that the Board of Education review and consider our recommendations before the final budget is approved. We ask that the Board of Education review and consider our recommendations before the final budget is presented. As we look to the future, when both you and the community understand what our work shows, it is our suggestion that the Budget Advisory Committee will, for many years, continue to be an uninterrupted and utilized part of the Three Village Central School District budgeting process. If anyone would like to contact the BAC, you can find us on Facebook, and I'm not saying that's where you need to go, at 3VCSD Budget Advisory Committee dash public page. Thank you. Yeah, or that, because he is our tech guy and our master analyst, so that's Michael. So, with that note, we're obviously not handing over any recommendations this evening. And once we receive that information, we'll be ready to go. And I just want to thank you, and Mr. Carlson, and Mrs. Pettisich, thank you for your time. And we'll see you again tomorrow night, and we look forward to seeing your proposed budget, okay? And as far as getting in touch with us, we can chat after the meeting and give you an email address. And certainly, of course, you can talk to Jeff too, as well, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. So, the next board meeting, you will also be on the agenda, and somebody from the committee will give me a name and it'll appear, okay? So, we will be looking forward to hearing you speak, whomever, at the next board meeting. Does the board have any questions?
I have a... maybe it's more of a comment than a question. Just, I think I take issue with one thing that you said about... When you said that the reason that the BAC was formed, how did you phrase that?
Right here, the reason it was formed was it was formed to increase transparency and communication with the district residents regarding the district's budget and finances. So, it was a conduit for us to be able to communicate with the community and begin to talk about what issues or what things that we were looking at and examining within budgets present and past.
Okay, because my understanding of the reason for it being formed, and I'm strongly in favor of the existence of this committee, and I'm deeply appreciative of the, not only the amount of work, but the quality of work that you guys are doing. I've had some conversations with some of your members, and, you know, I think it's going to be very helpful. But part of my concern is that the board is elected to shape this budget and approve it, and my understanding of the formation of the BAC was for you to help us in doing our job. You're not a freestanding, you know, committee that is going to approve or not approve the budget. And you're not a third force. You're with us. I mean, you're supposed to be helping us, and we're really relying on your guidance and your expertise, so...
That's what we're in a...
Yeah, that's what I think should be the goal, and maybe it should have been clearer from the beginning. But that's what I'm hoping for, for us to really be able to support each other. Because everything that you're saying, transparency, communicating with the... Those are all values that we take very seriously, and we should be working together to support that, not at, you know, as some sort of third direction that you guys are taking as an independent unit. You're here to advise us.
So, are we reporting to the board?
I would think so, yeah, to the board, yeah, because ultimately, we're the ones who... Because they, you know, they're not going to listen to you. You're, you know, you have no standing to advise the administration. You tell us, and then we're going to look at it, and we want it, and then we're going to take all those things into consideration. And hopefully, you know, it's going to be useful information. We're going to adopt a lot of it. But it's not like, you know, you can tell them what you want. That's why we were elected to do that. And then we created this committee to help us do our job better. And then, the only other thing I would add is, with respect to some of your requests for information, what I would ask Administration is that any request for information that you get from the BAC, if you would treat it with the same level of responsiveness as if it was coming from the board itself.
And that has...
That has been occurring.
Okay.
I believe that we... all information that the BAC has requested, we are providing.
Well, Sue said that.
Right.
Yeah, I know, I'm just...
And I realize that maybe sometimes it's not as quick as you would like, but we are working on it, and we are attuned to that, and you believe it is important.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
I don't think it was very clear what our interaction would be directly with the board, so...
Yeah, and that's our fault. You know, that was our own failing, I think. We didn't... We never gave you a formal charge in the beginning of this process, which we should have. But, you know, we haven't had the BAC in a little while, and we're sort of feeling...
When was the last time?
The last time was when Frank Karasetti was superintendent. That would be around 2007, 2006. It was very early on.
Yeah.
But I'm so grateful for the amount of work that you're doing. I mean, it's just so valuable. And, you know, we're kind of feeling our way through it, but we'll improve, we'll iterate.
No, I think your commitment and dedication is admirable in every way. But I also, I agree with Jonathan, but working together is the only way to go. You know, we can't work against each other. All of your goals and our goals are exactly the same. Everybody in all of our buildings in our district, and our district's reputation, and our students, and every human being that works or goes to school in all of our buildings. That's it, giving them the most opportunities, the greatest teachers, which we have, okay? And I know every school district says that, but it's really true here. But all of those things, our end goal is exactly the same as yours, exactly.
And I think this is a great opportunity to set up a framework. And because this is something that hasn't been done in many years, it's an opportunity to set up this kind of cooperation, which is partly what I'm saying when I talk about transparency, you know, between us, where we do feel like we are respected, just because we want to be respected. So, I think that that... I think moving forward, it's great. I mean, I'm looking forward to...
It is great. It's exciting, right? Yes, they want it to be... Yes, but you know what? You're learning so much this year, you know, since, I guess, January, right, it started? So, since January, you've done a tremendous amount, and you, I hear, the spreadsheets that are...
I do like a...
Tremendous. So, I just, I think you're learning so much in a different way, not that you're learning so much about the process and the do's and the don'ts, and hands tied, not hands tied, and what is really important to everyone in this district, which we 100% are on the same page and agree. Next year, it's going to be that much easier. It's still going to be a tremendous amount of work, but you're going to have that experience under your belt. It's just like being a board member. The first year, you're like... But, you know, as time goes on and you learn, you, you know, I think it's a great partnership, and the cooperation is fantastic from Administration to you guys, your whole committee and the board. And I think we are on the right track, and, you know, a tradition that should continue. And I think the board agrees with that statement.
Learning all the budget codes, very steeply...
Yeah. You'll all be an expert by next year. Absolutely, and you'll be sharing with new members next year, right? Pretty much, so that's good.
Can I just ask one question? Will we have the opportunity to actually sit with you, or we're not allowed to just sit with you? Do we have to be...
Here?
You can sit with three of us.
You can, yeah, you mean here or somewhere else?
Not at Starbucks. No, I mean, like, in terms of going over our information and discussing with you, or is it all going to be done through email?
No, you can sit with three of us, up to three.
Or, excuse me, the next board meeting, two weeks from tonight, is a budget development workshop. It could be at that.
Or are you looking for more of a conversation? Yeah.
But you want your findings first. You want to finish.
Yeah, I guess before we present it to the community, we may want to just...
I think that would be very helpful and valuable.
Absolutely.
You know, there may be some obvious ones, I'm thinking of, that might make sense, or might not be...
Let's sit down with... let's figure out... I'm happy to do it, and if there are two others, Sharie...
So, the... wait, but the next...
And Irene.
The next meeting is tomorrow. So, you're talking about the March 22nd meeting for them to sit with us?
No, just at some point, informally, I think. Right, is that what you're...
Yeah, the question was, how many of you can we sit with?
But if it's done in executive, I mean...
No, not in executive.
Do you... it's good, Mike, Mike, are you thinking maybe have three of the board members come, not tomorrow night, to the next BAC meeting, and it could be at that, because it's...
Can we all be there?
No, only three of you.
Three board members can go to...
Constitute a meeting.
Okay.
You can't constitute a meeting, so you could have three of the board members. So, the board could appoint three members to attend.
So, we can't invite them to executive for... to come in at any point?
No, that's not permitted.
I don't know. Gotcha.
Are we allowed to have a work session?
Yes.
You would allow... yes.
Yes.
You could have a public work session, yes, that you could have. That would have to be advertised, but yes, you can do that.
Good job, Irene. Yeah, we're doing that next year. We all forgot. So, that's what we'll do. So, we'll be in touch through our district clerk on dates and times, and we'll do something like that. I just think it's important that the entire board is there to hear than just three.
Right, it must be before the budget is adopted.
Well, that's why I thought maybe at the March 22nd BAC meeting, it can be... That can be that, that.
We could use that date if the BAC was willing to use that as a budget on workshop.
Yeah, that way, it still gives some time. The BAC still has another date scheduled after that, and there's still time after that meeting. It could be more informational gather, whatever, prior to the April 13th budget adoption.
So, March 23rd is a board meeting.
Right.
Right, you said...
No, but you said, when you said at the next budget, the board meeting.
Oh, I meant budget, okay. So, the next budget meeting is the 22nd, because that's what I have, right?
Right.
Twenty...
22nd at...
Wait.
March 22nd Tuesday.
Is the BAC meeting.
Is the BAC.
Yes, and the following night is a board meeting.
If we make it a work session.
Yeah, well, that's exactly, right.
We could, yeah, we could infringe on your meeting. Yeah, we would have, yes, we would have to obviously put up a public notice that we're having a workshop, obviously, which is all the district's clerk's responsibility. But we're going to get the budget next week, early next week, and then after that, they're going to get it, yes?
Is that the kind of thing that you're imagining?
When are we getting the budget?
After we get it.
So, you're getting it...
Early next week. We don't have an actual date, but...
As long as there's enough time for us.
Well, that's why I'm bringing up dates, because if you don't want to have it, you have it two or three days, and we, you know, you're not ready.
Yeah, I mean, when we say, when we say, right, I mean, basically...
We have to get it sent... we have to get it first, and then you could get it five minutes later, or, you know.
Yeah, I mean, right. No, no, no.
No, 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 it's just one of those...
So, Michael, do you have an expectation, how many days you need to analyze the budget?
Well, we are waiting on staffing, we're chomping at the mouth, so we expect everything to be done with that, so...
Like, three, four days?
Yeah, I mean, when the budget is made available, then the appropriate question, have it...
But the meeting that you're describing, when would that be?
This is the 22nd. So, that would give us... If they get it early?
Yeah, so you'd be getting it the 14th or 15th?
Well, I don't think the 14th...
The 14th would definitely...
We'd get it, yeah?
Yeah, by next...
15th, play safe.
So, the 22nd, you think?
So, we're... okay.
So, is that what we want to do?
Is that enough for you?
I think what we'll do is, can we please say tentatively yes, and then we go back to our committee and just make sure everybody's...
Contact Inger Germano and...
Or Jeff.
Or Jeff.
What is the staffing data that you're looking for?
Mike has sent information, and we're going through that right now. We're in the process, so you should have that. That is not this... I'm sorry. That is not the staffing data that we're looking for. This is current staffing that we have. This is not our projected staffing that we are going through with... that is based mostly on course selection, enrollment, and other factors at the secondary level. Yes, a little more detail, yeah, so, yeah.
They'll have it before the budget.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so you'll have it before you get the budget, before we get the budget, and then you get the budget. Anything else from anybody about this?
Anything else from you?
You good? Get me a name on the Friday before the next meeting, so I can put it on the agenda for you. Okay, so now, we're going to go to... We're going to turn this over to Sue Rosenzweig, and she's going to give us some district news.
Okay, thank you. So, just a sampling of good news from around the district since we met last. Congratulations to Minnesotki's Aya Hayder and her teacher Christine Sacco. Aya is a runner-up in this year's fourth and fifth grade Arbor Day poster contest, and is going to have her work featured in the upcoming Arbor Day Foundation calendar, so keep your eye out for that. A round of applause for Tasneem Lokman, Julie Yang, Rachel Gresson, and Lexi Gallery, four of Stephanie DiLorenzo's art students at Ward Melville High School. Each has been selected for inclusion in the Atelier at Flowerfield Art Show. You can enjoy seeing their work in person at the opening reception, which will be this Saturday, March 12th, from noon till 2:00. You can congratulate Tasneem Lokman again, along with Nicole Xiao, for recognition by the Region at Large Program of Scholastic Arts and Writing Awards. Tasneem, who is an AP Studio student, received honorable mention in portfolio. Nicole received a gold key for her package design from Graphic Design, and will automatically advance to the national level of adjudication in the city. Bravo also, of course, to their teachers, Ms. DiLorenzo and Ms. Weissman. Our amazing Three Village Mock Trial Team is 3-0 in Suffolk to date. We're very proud of our students, and sure they're happy to be participating in in-person trials, once again, after a year off. Best of luck as they continue and share. Congratulations to their coach, Doug Elliott, and their attorney advisor, Joe Prokop. And finally, congratulations to the Jelena's, Murphy, and Ward Melville Science Olympiad Teams. Last month, the Ward Melville team placed first in regionals, and last weekend, the junior high teams competed in the Eastern Long Island Regionals, their first in-person competition since 2019. Jelena's placed first, and Murphy took second. All three teams now move on to the state competition upstate next month. Hardy high five to all of our student Olympians, and of course, to their advisors McGuire, Angermeyer, Huja, DiMartino, Marata, Mutter, Reichoff, Shukman, Sergiano, and Susser. We wish you all good luck in Syracuse.
It's just fantastic.
Yes, a lot to be proud of.
Very.
So, I think my statement will probably come as joyful to the community. As you know, I've been making announcements for probably two years now on Mondays and Fridays, telling you about health-related correspondence and asking you to go to the website. So, this Friday will actually be my last phone call that I will make. I'm sure that you're all happy not to hear that phone message at 5:15. However, we will be posting information on a daily basis. We'll continue to be posted to the district website, but this will be the last phone call. Hopefully, we are moving in the right direction. So, thank you for your patience and your understanding, so you can stop looking for those phone call messages. Thank you.
I can start answering calls from the district today.
It's getting better every day, and it's...
No cases today.
No cases, okay. Does anybody on the board or anybody else have anything for board discussion or questions before we move on? Okay, so number seven items for board action. A, Eastern Suffolk Board of Cooperative Educational Services, EBOCI's Board Member Nominations. Okay, yeah, sorry. Can I please have a motion?
You got it.
Second, all in favor. Opposed abstentions? Motion passes. Seven B, Approval of Stipulation of Settlement and General Release. Can I have a motion?
Some...
Second. All in favor? Opposed abstentions? Motion passes. We're going to move on to eight consent agenda, approval of consent agenda items 8A through 8R. Can I have a motion? Second. Questions? We're going to ask our questions next. All in favor? Okay, motion passes. So, letter B, Minutes of February 9th, 2022, self-explanatory. Can I have a motion? Second.
You don't have to... you just voted on all of them. It's just information now.
Okay. I'm just so used to... can I have a motion? Okay. All right, so we're going to go now one by one, and we're going to hear from whomever to give explanation and us to ask any questions. So, let's go to C, Acceptance of Donations. Jeff Carlson.
We have one donation. It's a check for $500 from the Brookhaven Cluster of the Suffolk County Super Tenants Association for the Ward Melville High School Scholarship Fund.
Excellent. D, Declaration of Surplus Equipment, Jeff?
We have some various equipment from Minnesotki, Jelena's, and North Country, all in unusable condition. Do you want me to just continue on with it?
Yes, please, to H.
The next item is Health and Welfare Services Contract. This is for Three Village resident students that attend private schools located in other districts. We have a... oh, I'm sorry, before that was an outside service provided for special education services. That's related to IEPs, then the Health and Welfare Services Contract. We have a special education tuition contract, again, in accordance with student IEPs. We have the Corrective Action Plan to the New York State Comptroller's Audit. This will be posted now after acceptance by the board on our website tomorrow. Most of these items have been in place for quite a while now, some going back two years. That's all of mine. That's all of mine.
That was H. Okay, so Gary, can you talk about I through K?
Certainly. I is the approval of the memorandum of agreement between Three Village School District and Cafeteria Unit. This extends their contract up until 2024. Personnel matters instructional. We have several things on there. We have a few resignations. We have a guidance leave of absence. We have approximately nine junior high and high school coaches for approval, additional athletic supervision, SAT prep courses, and a variety of before and after-school supervision.
Great.
K, non-instructional. We, as usual, every month, we have retirements. For this agenda, we have a custodian, a lunch monitor, and a SAC supervisor. In addition, we have six resignations, but we also have additional hiring in terms of clerical, custodial, additional security guards, replacement monitors and SEAs, and a replacement SAC employee, as well as the hiring of seven additional non-instructional subs.
Excellent. Kevin, can you talk about L through R?
Yeah, yes, so we have a change to our previously approved list of district committees. We're removing one of our curricular committees and changing the name to something else. For M, the 2022-23 course, new courses, we had to make an adjustment because two of the courses, the art course labs, were added together and they needed to be separated for approval. For N, it's another affiliation degree. We continue with our relationships with many college universities, replacements for clinical experiences. This is with St. Bonaventure University. The next is for revisions to the 2021-22 approval for committees on special education. We have revised list of chairs for that committee. And then we have the revisions for the 21-22 appointments of the impartial hearing offices, also a deletion from that committee, those hearing offices list.
Excellent. Okay, so we already voted, so I can move on. Okay. Just to, I wanted to, we talked a little, just to quickly about the summer rec camp. I'm assuming we're not doing a travel summer camp, we're just doing the summer rec camp, half-day, full-day?
We actually are thinking about doing a travel camp this year, bringing it back. We had not had it, it had been on hiatus for two years, but this year, we are really hoping to bring it back. That is the game plan.
Terrific. The camps are fantastic here, and we know definitely the summer rec, the half and the full days, and it, we're doing a half-day at one school and we're doing full-day at two schools? Or is it just one?
Just one.
Full, full-day at Mini, half-day at Mount? Mount, yes.
Okay.
Right.
It's not anymore, okay.
Wait, did we, did we vote on all these things?
Yeah.
At the beginning.
That was the first thing.
So that wasn't group, that wasn't a vote to group them in a consent agenda?
It was.
That was the vote, that was the vote on all these items?
Yes, your, your agenda is set up as a consent agenda.
We're changing our format, we're taking a minute to get used to it.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, it's all in one.
Okay. So shouldn't we vote after we read them all?
I don't know.
We're supposed to vote after, right? Yeah, right.
Inger, are we supposed to vote after or before?
I would vote after.
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah, I agree, should be after.
Okay.
What did Chris say?
Vote after.
We can vote, lump them all together.
Okay, so you'll change it for the next agenda, okay. So that's what we'll do.
Okeydoke, thank you.
So.
Just felt like we should have voted there.
I know. Yeah.